Good evening and welcome to this evening's Tiffin City School Board of Education meeting. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will call the meeting to order. Mrs. Perry, can you call the roll?
Dr. McBride.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Dr. Gase.
Yes, here.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Here.
Mr. Perez.
This brings us to item two, which is adopt the agenda. Mrs. Perry, are there any additions or corrections?
There are none.
Seeing that there are none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as it stands. Any discussion or questions? Mrs. Perry.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes. That brings us to item three, which is recognitions. We will turn it over to...
You can turn it to me, and I'm going to be turning it over to Ms. Coon for a recognition here. Ms. Coon?
Okay. So I would like to have Clarice Barker join me. Clarice started the 22-23 school year as a junior. However, she came to the Tornado Academy about mid-year, and at that point, she decided that she wanted to start her adult life a little bit early. And so Clarice worked really, really hard, and she was able to complete all of her junior classes and all of her senior classes so that she could become a Tiffin Columbian 2023 graduate. And so this evening, I would like to present Clarice Barker with her diploma. Clarice is very special to me. When I was a principal at Hopewell, she was one of my students. So I'm very excited to see her finish her career and have the ability to give her that. She has a wonderful family who are very supportive, and I know Clarice is going to go on and do great things. Do you want to talk? No. Clarice is not a talker. She plans on going to Heidelberg for the next two years and then hopefully on to Massachusetts. She's thinking of studying with accounting is what she's looking at doing. So that is Clarice Barker, and I'm very proud of her. Congratulations.
Mrs. Perry, come join us. Get over here. All right, Mrs. Perry, please share with us who all you have here with you.
I'm going to point out that grandson first.
Absolutely.
This is my one and only grandson, Case Jeffrey, and my oldest daughter, Amanda, my youngest daughter, Courtney, my only son, Christopher, and his friend Spencer, and my husband Jeff.
So I stand here with a lot of honor, and though Mr. Richards and I kind of fought back and forth on who was going to stand here, and I don't know that I have adequate words to thank you for your time. You have been here for numerous boards and numerous superintendents. The work of a school treasurer is incredible and keeping the sound steward of our finances and... How many employees?
350 regular and extra 200 irregular.
350 regular and extra 200 irregular, and what is our budget overall?
About 35 million.
About 35 million.
But that's just general funds, so counting all the other funds, close to 60 million.
So navigating a close to $60 million budget while also being a mom to a beautiful family and being an enormous strength and resource and guide for all of us. You have had tumultuous years and you have had calm years, and you have been our rock and our calm and your department's calm, and you have kept 500-plus employees and $60 million sound and safe in your care. It has been a true honor to work with you, and I am sad for us to lose you, but I'm so thrilled for you to get to go spend time with your family. Congratulations on your retirement.
There are so many people that I need to thank. 25 years' worth of wonderful, supportive people, from those who helped me start this journey to those who are helping me finish it. Thank you to Veronica Reinhardt for suggesting that I apply for a treasurer position at Old Fort Local Schools back in 1998 and for being a career-long mentor and lifelong friend. Thank you to the first board of education who hired me, Mike Gattlesberger, Larry Dunlap, Don Ellis, Norm Murray, and Dale Sterns for giving me the professional opportunity of a lifetime. Thank you to Mary Sauber, a retired treasurer from Hopewell Loudoun, for patiently teaching me the basics of school accounting in my first two years at Old Fort, and to Eileen Gaedo for replacing her as my assistant without a single hiccup. Thank you to Betty and Nancy Etnowecca for guiding me through the strange new world of state software. Thank you to my first board of education here at Tiffin City Schools, Chris Widman, Kathy Venema, Don Yanantuno, Randy Schwartz, and Shirley Smith for giving me the opportunity to serve in my own district, the one that was educating my children. Thank you to my first administrative team, Don Coletta, Scott Urban, and Tom Anway for their knowledge, guidance, support, and relentless dedication during the daunting task of balancing our budget. Thank you to my first support staff, Liz Paulus, Carol Vaughn, Tricia Kirian, Dara Dixon, Carol Coleman, Vicky Finley, and both Pat Smith, day and night, who welcomed, supported, and encouraged me while I tried to keep my head above water. Thank you to all of the other board members, administrators, support staff, and colleagues who came and served over the past 13 years. I sincerely appreciate each and every one of their contributions and will always value our time together. Thank you to our current board of education, Dr. McBride, Mr. Williams, Dr. Gase, Mr. Kizabeth, and Mr. Perez for your confidence and support, but more importantly, your unwavering commitment to serve our district, its staff, its students, and its taxpayers. Thank you to my final administrative team, Mr. Richards, Mr. Bows, Mrs. Tuitt, Ms. Coon, Mr. Nadeau, and Mr. Daniel. Your leadership, support, and cooperation were absolutely crucial to my success, and I will be forever grateful for your professional expertise. Thank you to my current support staff, Angie Klaus, Tammy Hare, Brogan Jones, Daniel Robinel, Kelly Sparre, and again, Pat Smith and Carol Vaughn. I hope you all know how much I appreciate you. I am so proud of your work ethic, your knowledge, your attention to detail, your patience, your honesty, and your constant cooperation with me. I will be forever grateful for your endless support and, more importantly, our treasure friendship. And finally, thank you to my family, the loves of my life, who patiently stood by and unselfishly supported me the past 25 years while I served as a school treasurer. My husband Jeff and I chose Tiffin City Schools many years ago for all four of our children, Amanda, Christopher, Allison, and Courtney. From Clinton Elementary to West Junior High, Tiffin Middle School, and Columbian High School, we could not be prouder of their success. This district built the foundations they needed to become an administrative professional, a school psychologist, an orthopedic surgeon, and a child development director. Thank you to everyone at Tiffin City Schools who truly made a difference in their young lives. This career has certainly been a challenging one, but at the end of each and every year, as I witnessed yet another class of amazing students graduate, I was suddenly reminded of why it's really just been nothing but an incredibly rewarding one. Thank you and farewell.
Thank you to Mrs. Perry's family for joining us this evening and celebrating her and recognizing her incredible accomplishments and celebrating her retirement. This brings us on to item three, no, item four, which is a superintendent's reports and recommendations.
Thank you for that. We've had a few changes here in the district in the past few months. I think what we're going to find as we move forward is that's as districts, not just Tiffin City Schools. The summer was usually a more quiet time where we could prepare for the next school years. The summers are now becoming a lot more action-packed with changes and new people coming in and people leaving, and so having to navigate through that. So I've submitted to the board a little bit of a tweak to the reorganization plan with the departures of Ms. Coon and Mrs. Duran Miller, who I think will be substantial losses for the district with their incredible expertise. We're going to have to shift some of what we're doing. One of those changes happens to be here this evening is Mrs. Laura Bryan. I think we're going to shift to be a director of elementary learning. I think making certain that we have more supports for our elementary students and our elementary principals is going to be key. With a lot of the initiatives that we have, we will not be replacing that director of secondary learning. Instead, the cabinet, we are looking at some other alternatives where maybe we're going to pay some staff members some additional funds to do some additional work in the area of secondary education. And I think with the new stewardship of Mr. Alvarado at the high school and Mr. Imke at the middle school, I think we're in very good standing with those two exceptional leaders. So I just wanted to talk about some of those things. So as we move forward, there would be a number of administrative positions that are not filled for this coming year that we originally planned. I'm not saying that we will never refill them, but I think for this coming year, if, once you're after July 10th, the ability to hire staff members from other places is now, it used to be difficult, now it's proving to be almost impossible. So I think this also gives us an additional year to see how this system runs and to look for strengths and weaknesses as we move forward.
So do you foresee having, like, with secondary, do you foresee having, like, heads of departments or...?
I think we're looking at maybe some ways to take on some additional curriculum work. I'd love to eventually see department chairs. I think that's something that we're going to have to do a little bit more groundwork on setting up as to what that looks like. My understanding is it's been a hot minute since we've had department chairs in this district, and I'm looking over to my left at Mr. Kizabeth. And if Mr. Kizabeth says it's been a while, I think that probably means a while. So I think we need to set the table for what department chairs...
He's also had a lot of topsy-turvy secondary education curriculum directors, too.
Yeah.
From none to somebody who was really in elementary.
Yeah.
Taking over the secondary. So we've had a lot of mismatch.
And I think this is going to make us, I think eventually we're going to get more streamlined, but I think we can also take advantage of, we have so many staff members at all levels of our education, but especially in secondary that have some unbelievable skill sets, and I think we have the ability to tap into those a little bit more, to look for our local resources to serve. But yet again, I think that's something that we're going to have to set the table on a little bit more. The notion of department chairs, while I know what that means and it's very clear in my mind, for someone that's been away for a while, I think we're going to have to reintroduce that topic on how we can best...
I'm going to put a plug in for it because, you know, at some point in time, you have to have strive for excellence.
Yes.
I don't believe a secondary, you know, curriculum director may have the expertise to know and that we would, I would like to promote department chairs.
Yes.
And furthermore, you can end up paying them more.
Yep.
Because there's very little opportunity to get paid for performance. And so this is an opportunity that we can actually pay somebody more money, keep the higher-quality staff members that we really want.
I do not disagree with anything that you said. Yet again, though, I think part of it is, as I've had some informal conversations about department chairs, because it's been so long, that's a newer concept again for Tiffin City Schools, and I just think we have to set the table for that a little bit more. I thought that was, very bluntly, I thought that was something that, if I said department chair, everybody has a general understanding as to what department chairs do and how it works and how it functions. And I've just found so far, I don't think that's the case here because it's been a while since we've had those. So I completely agree, Dr. Gase, and I think we have a lot of expertise already on our staff that we could use, you know, have a math department chair that looks at how we're doing 6 through 12 math curriculum to make sure we have vertical alignment for that, and that those are the people that we send to those conferences and best, looking for best practice in those areas. I very much agree with that, which is why it was on my original reorganization plan. I just think that one's taken longer than what I would have anticipated simply as we kind of wrap our heads around what do department chairs do and what is the role and function of a department chair.
Mr. Richards.
Yes.
I agree wholeheartedly with Dr. Gase there, but I think that it offers you an opportunity, too, now that you had to push it aside, that when you do this, think about it in terms of organizing your departments as well. We have arts, music.
Yes.
PE as well, so it's really...
And library.
Which, exactly.
Guidance.
And so I think it's, gives you the opportunity to also send a mission into, or mission statement incorporated into that with your strategic plan that eventually...
I agree with that. So even though it will be tough losing those staff members, there's always an opportunity. Whenever we have something that happens with us, there's always an opportunity to reflect and to see how we can still grow and improve even with those changes.
Any further questions or discussion for Mr. Richards? Mr. Richards, any pieces under additional items or...?
No, just that I'm going to say July is a special month as well for me because the August board meeting will represent the first, my second August board meeting at Tiffin City Schools. So now that I'm at the July board meeting, this will complete 12 board meetings, official, regular board meetings that I've had for Tiffin City Schools. And so far, I know I was very excited when this board of education offered me the position as superintendent at Tiffin City Schools, not a responsibility I take very seriously, and I respect a great deal, and I had a lot of enthusiasm. And at the end of the first year, I, my eyes might be a little bit more open on some of our exciting things that we have and our challenges, but I'm just as excited now as I was when the board offered me a position last year. So I'm very happy to still be at Tiffin City Schools and working for our students and our staff and our community.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. This brings us to item five, which is an opportunity for the public to address the board. Each person addressing the board will give their name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted three minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. Are there any individuals here who are hoping to address the board this evening? Seeing none, that brings us on to the consent agenda. I'll read the headers and then ask for a motion. So the consent agenda, we have 6.01, approve the minutes from the June regular and July special board meetings. Point 02, approve the treasurer reports for June. Point 03, approve the committee reports for June. 6.04, administrative employment. Point 05, employment, which includes numerous pieces regarding professional staff, resignations, and other contract pieces, supplemental contracts. And that goes on to page six, which is 6.06, donations and grants. Again, thank you to those businesses and individuals who take their time and investment, either fiduciary or others, into our district and our students. 6.07, stipends, which goes on through page nine. And then 6.08, fund-to-fund transfer. 6.09, tournament site agreements. We'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Mrs. Perry.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes. This brings us to action items. 7.01, approve the TEA collective bargaining agreement with a date corrected. We'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
This is just on the previous document. It said it was July 2023 to 2026. As the board knows, it was a two-year contract, so the 2026 was a typo, not it is in 2026. So we just wanted to clarify officially for the record, even though everything in the document said it's a two-year contract, the date on the one contract was incorrect. So we just wanted to clarify that for public good measure.
Any further questions? Mrs. Perry.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes. 7.02, adopt the fiscal year 2024 permanent appropriation resolution. We'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Perry.
Would you like me to discuss or call the roll?
Discuss, please.
The permanent appropriations resolution is exhibited back on page, begins on page 41. Page 42 lists all of the...
Turn your volume up.
Is that better?
We're hearing no.
Nope.
Try again, Mrs. Perry.
Is that better? Yes.
Yep, there we go.
All right. On page 42 of the exhibits, all of the totals that are being set aside or appropriated in each fund are listed. These amounts set the legal limit for expenditures in the new fiscal year. None of them can exceed the estimated resources and that have been certified by the County Budget Commission, which we received those amounts in July. In the general fund, that is based on the five-year forecast, and it includes all of our limited budgets, and it reserves about 26% of our estimated resources for about $12 million, which is about four months' worth of operating costs. So the general fund total is 30, almost $34.4 million. In the OO2 bond retirement fund, that amount will pay for the final middle school debt and also our outstanding House Bill 264 energy improvements debt that doesn't mature until 2028. In the OO3 permanent improvement fund, that is based on the annual tax budget that was approved way back in January on the actual prior year expenditures from this most recently completed fiscal year and also the current obligations that are outstanding. It reserves only about 10% of its estimated resources, or about $200,000. And then every year, we collect another, close to $900,000 now. In the OO6 food service fund, that's based on the actual prior year expenditures and some estimated inflation, and it reserves about six months or 35% of its estimated resources, or about $485,000 reserved. In the O34 classroom facilities maintenance, that's the half-mill levy that is being collected for the middle school, but that will expire at the end of this calendar year. So no more collections starting next year, and that reserves about $800,000 for future needs. Once that amount is depleted, then it will be funded by the permanent improvement fund. All of the other funds that are listed are basically funds that whatever is generated in revenue is intended to be spent. So those are appropriated at 100% of their resources. Any supplemental amounts can be recommended during the year as needed if these are insufficient.
Any further questions or discussion for Mrs. Perry?
Just to clarify, this second collection this summer, that's the last payment we're making on the middle school levy, correct?
Yes.
Along with the maintenance fund. So, because I know I paid my taxes last week or the week before.
Yes.
So people will see that next year, January, right, with their tax statements, that it's not on there anymore.
Correct.
So...
Sharon, the line 507, was that part of the ESTR funds?
Yes, that is the last round of funding, and that is the amount of the grant that is left. That was, that's the ARP ESTR, which is also known as ESTR 3. And it was over, I think the original amount was about $3.5 million. So this is what we have left for this year yet.
So we haven't committed that to anything yet?
That has been committed to staffing, mental health, lots of different programs.
So all of that spoken for, then? Is that what you...?
Yes, that's our, that's our, yes, that's our intent for this year because...
Okay, but it can't be spent throughout the year?
It can be spent throughout the year, yes, but then, I think we have until September 30th of 2024 to get that spent. Yeah, so a little over a year.
Any further questions or discussion? Thank you, Mrs. Perry. Can you call the roll?
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes. 7.03, approve education alternative student transportation agreement. We'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
This is for a student placed outside of our district for their individual learning needs and making sure that transportation is provided as required in their federal IEP document.
Any questions or discussion? Mrs. Perry.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes. 7.04, approve the updated school resource officer agreement.
So moved. Second.
So we already approved one once before, but there were some minor, yet again, typos and discrepancies in the language that the law officer, the law director, I'm sorry, picked up on, and so they wanted to make those changes. They're nothing of a financial nature for the district or for the board, but they were just clarifying language pieces.
Questions or discussion? Mrs. Perry.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes. 7.05, approve street light special education services agreement.
So moved.
Light street special education agreement, apologies.
Second.
This is for an organization that's going to be providing our special education boot camp here, I believe, actually, next week, which is to try to help us gain more in compliance with special education, which is part of the result of undergoing a special education audit that we've been doing in partnership with the Ohio Department of Education to make certain that we're improving our special education offerings and our compliance and making certain that our students with disabilities are afforded to the education that they are, that they should be afforded.
Any questions or discussion? Mrs. Perry.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Dr. McBride. Dr. McBride.
Yes. 7.06, approve digital radio purchase from Sound Solutions.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
This is for enhanced walkie-talkies for our district. This will actually give us the ability to communicate from any one building in our district to another building in the event of emergencies. This is using the safety grant money that we received through the governor's office of 500,000. After this purchase, along with the new video cameras that we are installing and the new swipe entrances and the cameras, as far as when visitors come, to make certain we have better IDing of visitors, we will still be left with, out of that original 500,000, we'll be left with an additional, almost 130,000, Scotty? Is that pretty close? So that's going to be the funds now. We're going to be working with some members of our leadership and other, another stakeholders to see how best to use some of that money. We've already had some people spitballing a few other ideas, but I look forward to working with our stakeholders to see how we can keep using that money to enhance student and staff security.
Any questions or discussion?
Did you indicate before that this, you've already are going to plan to buy vape detectors? Or is that hard?
Yes, I'm sorry, vape detectors are, they're already ordered. They probably won't be installed for the very beginning of the school year. Yeah.
And what all things do the vape detectors detect?
Smoking and vaping, they also picks up on a certain noise level that would cause a, like a bullying issue.
The various types of vapes, e-cigarettes.
So those are going to be in our middle school and high school bathrooms. That is middle school and high school. And it, it's not like a fire alarm where if it happens in the bathroom, sirens erupt throughout the entire school and we have to vacate. It is possible that even the notification for that could go directly to an administrator or assistant principal's cellphone, so that they could be silently notified, so that the individual in there, they may not hear, in fact, they most likely will not hear alarms and whistles going off. We could set it up that way, I've seen them done. We could do it that way, but it's probably going to be a silent notification system so that our administrators are notified and can respond to that situation. Thank you, Mr. Perez, I forgot to mention vape detectors as well.
We'll have, we won't have to do anything policy-wise on that.
No.
Okay.
No.
Any further questions? Mrs. Perry.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes. 7.07, approve PT Services professional service agreement. Take a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
So one of the things Mr. Doe has noticed is that all of our contract sequences for some of our auxiliary services are staggered at different years and for different durations of time. So you're going to notice typically when we work with PT Services, it's for more than one year. You're going to notice this is only a one-year contract. What we're hoping to do is be able to go through a process and one, do a request for an RFP one time, instead of having to keep doing them multiple times and looking for different vendors. So we're going through this process to be a little bit more diligent, hence why we're only doing this one for one year, so that we can try to put all of our contracts on a similar process and go through the process one time, so that you guys don't have to keep approving multiple things from the same entity on multiple occasions.
Any questions or discussion? Mrs. Perry.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes. Approve the, 7.08, approve the updated 2023, 2024 district calendar.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
What we did last past year, and I thought it went very well, was making certain that we took that Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving to do some additional professional development with staff. What we also do is an asynchronous learning for our students, and I would look forward to taking it back to the business advisory committee as to maybe how best to spend those two days. Working, the theme the past year was kind of college and careers and jobs with our students K through 12. We did youth science with our high school kids. We can now expand youth science to even middle school for this coming year as well. And yet again, that's special thanks to Greg Ettinger and the, and the staff at, I always say it wrong, Vanguard Sentinel. I always say it Sentinel Vanguard, and I've been told I'm wrong. So Vanguard Sentinel, for being able to assist with that, we're able to do that at no cost to our general fund at all. So I appreciate the work that we've had with that, so I'd look to replicate November 20th and 21st for that, April 8th. I think it was, if it was either the, the May meeting, Mr. Perez, or June, where you brought up the eclipse, and we had a little quick sidebar conversation. Since that time, I think I sent to the board, our local emergency responders have gotten together, and they've submitted in writing a recommendation. They are anticipating a high volume of traffic and lower response times on April 8th, and so their recommendation for all schools in the area is to not be in physical session on April 8th. And I think we, we owe it to our emergency responders, if they think this is what we need to do for student safety, I think it's best to work with that. I think, Dr. Gase, I might be misquoting you, if I am, you're going to correct me, but I think we have an opportunity and also make this into a learning opportunity for our kids as well about the eclipse. So I think we can work with our staff to figure out a, some way, K through 12, to have some sort of learning that occurs with a solar eclipse, which happens very rarely. I'm not even going to try to say how often it happens, because I'll be wrong, but very rarely. We will not look to make that a habit moving forward, because my understanding is, within any of our lifetimes, this will never pass through Tiffin, Ohio again. So this is a one-time deal. Just because I know I'm going to be quoted on all of this, I've had some people say, well, do you really think that Tuesday is going to be any better with the traffic? We don't know. And just probably like akin to snow days, we're going to wake up in the morning, and Mr. Daniel and I, I'm sure, will be out driving, and if the traffic is still really bad, we'll make a determination at that time. But just like snow days, I think it's way too early to make a determination about whether it's going to be bad the second day. But I think our, our first responders have said they anticipate the 8th being a high-volume day of additional traffic into our district, which makes it difficult, even though it's at 3:20, I think, PM, when this occurs, our high school is already going to be out. The reality is, in listening to our first responders, it's going to be difficult to get our elementary kids home from school because of the potential increased traffic. And so we just think that we want to be upfront with parents, tell everybody what the date is, we'll figure out some ways to make it educational, but there will not, we are not wanting, first responders don't want anybody coming to school that day. So that would even include, I know Mrs. Jones representing TEA is behind me, that even includes staff. They don't want staff showing up. And that is the request from first responders as well. So this is in alignment with what has been asked of us from those groups.
Any questions or discussion? Mrs. Perry.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes. This brings us to 7.09, determination of the OPEC grievance. Mr. Richards, we have specific language for that.
So what, what the board would do is, well, I think there should probably be a first and a second, and then we can discuss.
So we'll entertain a, a motion to-
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. So what this would be, the board has heard a notion of a grievance from an employee. So the board would need to vote in public, that's been communicated. So the board would either deny the grievance or uphold the grievance. So what would need to happen is, a board member would need to make a motion to either uphold the grievance, which would be holding in favor of the employee, or denying the grievance, which would be upholding management. And so then there would need to be a second, and then there'd have to be a vote on that. I would just remind the board yet again, and for anybody else, that personnel matters are really talked about in executive session, so the concepts that are talked about really should just be about the procedural vote, and, and board members should vote accordingly.
And these pieces were already held in executive discussion, but the language has to be very precise.
Yes.
So then we'll be looking for a motion to deny or uphold.
Yes, and that would be up to a board member to make, to move for one of those. But contractually, there, there does need to be a vote on this today, so we can't table that.
We discussed this in executive session at the end of last month's meeting, correct? And, Dr. Gase, you weren't here, so are you allowed to vote on this?
He's allowed to vote. Yes, he's allowed to vote.
He's been filling-
That's, that's his prerogative as a board member.
I wasn't sure if he would have been able to be briefed outside of the executive session.
No, he, he's, he is allowed to vote.
Okay.
As a board member, there is nothing that can deny his right to vote.
Well, I guess in that regard, to be respectful to Dr. Gase, do you want to have discussions in executive session first, or just are you ready to vote on this issue?
So we need a motion to uphold or deny the OPEC grievance that was heard at the last board meeting.
Correct.
All right. So I would move to deny the grievance.
Does that need a second, since there was already a motion on the floor?
No, it would need to be seconded.
I will second it then.
Any questions or discussion? Mrs. Perry.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
abstain.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes.
And also just to clarify, there will be something in writing to the employee within 10 days. That is a requirement as well.
Thank you, and thank you for clarification on the language, to ensure that that was recorded appropriately. 7.10, approve Tornado Academy student and parent handbooks. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
So yet again, I think, and, Mr. Williams, thank you for working to control yourself. I, I think it's fair to say, and Tornado Academy goes last, because they try to mirror some of the things that happened within the other buildings. I, I think it's safe to say for all parties involved, and the board knows this, and our administrative team will be aware of this very shortly here when we have our meetings, but improving our handbooks and the process for handbooks is going to be a point of emphasis this year. I appreciate the board's latitude and flexibility as we've gone through that process. I do appreciate it, but we should be able to be better at that moving forward, and it is my commitment to the board that we will improve in that area. So thank you for your patience and understanding, but it is going to be a point of emphasis for how we can improve moving forward. And that's not, please, that's not about Tornado Academy, that's on all handbooks across the district.
I'm just going to look at you, Mr. Williams, let you go.
Fill in the comments from previous meetings, right? You know, we'll expect a, a level of consistency. You know, the Tornado Academy is interesting, right? Because it's a, it's not its own building, it covers all grades, right? So there's a, there's some interesting aspects there to their, their handbook, right? So I think we need to evaluate the Tornado Academy handbook going forward and look at what, what needs to be in the handbook that is different from other buildings, right? There's, there's a lot of duplication from that handbook to the other. So, you know, as we think about Tornado Academy, right, it's almost like that handbook should be a supplement to the others as opposed to a standalone handbook to avoid some of that duplication. So, yeah, I do look, I do look forward to some of the consistency that we can get into the handbooks, and not just look forward to, but, but expect it, so.
Yes, agreed.
Other questions or discussion? Thank you, Desmond.
Only one addition. Regarding all the form and function, I was asked to ask you about this, but, you know, with the design of these in the future, if you would, you know, you have the, is it graphic design abilities at the high school or the middle school? I think there's some students that would be, love to be involved in that, so.
Well, that's what the high school currently does. The cover of the high school handbook has been drafted by a student, but we also have some groups that are going to be working with, trying to create more consistency with our logo and our brand moving forward, and I think the handbooks would be a-
Good place to start.
A good place to start on that, to make sure we have some consistency, so that when people open documents from Tiffin City Schools, that they are firmly aware that they are receiving a document from Tiffin City Schools.
Any other pieces? Mrs. Perry. Oh, Andy, did you have something?
No.
Okay. Mrs. Perry.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes. 7.11, the resignation of Brianna Withers. We'll entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
Again, this is, this is not an indication about performance or anything, that there's a July 10th deadline for all public employees in the state of Ohio, school, education employees in the state of Ohio, that if we leave after that, we can deny accepting their resignation, and that gets reported to ODE. I've checked around with some other area schools, this is going to become more and more prevalent, regretfully, as the, as the talent pool keeps declining with available applicants. So this is in no means a reflection of her capabilities or talents. This is a procedural tool that the districts have to be able to protect themselves, to make certain that we get to keep our very best staff in working with our students. So this is state law to provide for this. You know, we will figure it out. I don't anticipate that if the board votes to uphold this, that it will have a profound impact, but I think we need to be consistent with our message with staff, that this is what we do for any staff members that leave after July 10th.
But to clarify, if we're voting yes, it means we're saying no to accepting.
Correct. Voting yes means you are not accepting the resignation, and, and I'm pretty positive that the employee is, is already going to be hired at a, at a new place of employment and, and will occur there. It doesn't probably change that, that reality, but I think from a school district standpoint, we need to be consistent with how we handle anybody who leaves after a July 10th deadline, so that we can be more consistent with our staff. And this is what happened last year as well, there was one instance of this last year.
Because the language of this is that we do not consent to the-
Correct. Correct.
So there's no financial penalty?
No.
Could you just clarify, just-
Yes.
For, for the record, there is a resignation in the consent agenda that we did accept. So could you clarify the difference between those two staff members?
Before July 10th.
Before July 10th and after July 10th.
Okay, that's fair. So we received, the, the one that we did approve as part of consent, we received before July-
Before July 10th.
I just want to make sure that there was clear to anybody.
Yep, that is the distinction. So, in fact, by law, there is nothing we are permitted to do to an employee that submits a resignation prior to July 10th. There can be no recourse taken. It is only for anybody who resigns after July 10th.
And the implications of denying a resignation are what?
We, we fill out a report that goes to the Ohio Department of Education, and they do with it as they, as they so please.
Is that the Department of Education or Department of Education and workforce now?
Well, that's being transitioning right now, Mr. Perez, so I'm not certain if I can truly tell you where that goes. We're in a state, right now it's still the Department of Education, but I know that is changing here. I don't know when the official changeover occurs. I know it's in process.
I think from what I've seen, that will still be part of the Department of Education, but- With government trying to run things, who knows?
Any further questions or discussions?
Yes. One thing that you mentioned, this person will be employed somewhere else.
Yes.
So we will still have a resignation. We're just not accepting.
We're just not accepting it. And they're still going to leave and probably work for another district. But I've checked around with some of my colleagues. This is a practice that regretfully more of us are going to have to do. And it is it is not an indication of the employee. It is not a lack of support, but our first and foremost priority is to make certain that we have the adults responsible for taking care of our students. That's our that's our first priority. And when we have resignations now after July 10th, that that mandate becomes more and more difficult for us.
And so some of this is also the precedent setting of people are able to leave, you can leave. We hope that you continue to, you know, move forward with your career, but we have to run a district. And so this precedent that has been put in place is hoping that people navigate this sooner.
Correct, to make sure that the district is taken care of. So the individuals before, and I think I may have informed the board on, I think it was July 7th, we hired three individuals on July 7th, and we had three resignations on July 7th. So we finished, we were about at noon, and we were feeling pretty good in the district office. Hey, we think we've got most of our hiring done, and then all of a sudden, no, we don't. But yet again, before July 10th, that gives us the better ability to handle that. We do still have a few vacancies that have not been filled. We are doing our best to try to fill those right now, but some of those vacancies that occurred late are what make it even more difficult now for us to be able to to hire people and capable people in those places.
Thank you.
Has this position been hired?
No, it has not yet.
Okay.
So again, remember as you're voting that you are voting that you do not consent to the requested resignation. Any further questions? Mrs. Perry.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
No.
Dr. McBride.
Yes. This brings us to board discussion, so I'll open it to the floor to my fellow board members of pieces you would like to discuss or bring to the table.
Just like thank Mrs. Perry. If we look at the treasurer and superintendent, really, it's CEO and a CFO. And I think we can all name a few CEOs of some companies, but I don't know if anybody here could name the CFO of Amazon, right? And there's a reason for that. You know, the treasurer sort of sits in the background, and that's good. Unfortunately, it's good when you don't know who the treasurer is, right?
That's right.
So so thank you for doing a good job. We'll miss you. Thank you.
I would also like to thank you, Mrs. Perry, because I wore a number of different hats in this district while you were the treasurer, and you always were great at keeping me straight and out of trouble, and I appreciate that. So thanks for all you've done, not only for me, but for this district.
I may have done that, but I can't name all of those positions now.
Yeah, Sharon, I think one thing I'd like to say is that your integrity is beyond reproach, and that really, really makes a difference. And I think that's all I that's all I can say is that that makes a huge difference. So thank you.
And thank you as well. I think that was, I think your ability was there, but we never had any doubt about your character, your integrity. We knew our money was safe here and that our operations were safe and that you were somebody that could be trusted and demonstrated that you were somebody that could be trusted. And again, it's good not to see you in the news or known because you're doing a good job, and that's how the business operates. But I, you know, I personally want to thank you for helping me through the pandemic years, my years as president, and I don't think people see the behind the scenes work that you do with your staff, doing the reports, doing the budgeting, the all that other stuff that you do. They don't know how you were able to run forecast for us and really adjust on the fly. So I wish you a happy retirement, but just so everybody knows, she's still on the top of her game here, so thank you.
Mrs. Perry, I have to echo Victor's words as well. The pandemic years and my first few years on the board and sitting as president, I've never made any, I've never boasted that school finances where I am strongest. It is a really complicated process. And the number of times you've just let me come in and sit in your office while you walked me through something or explained something or broke down various pieces, made all the difference in being able to sit up here and do this work. And so I appreciate your open door and your your constant patience when I'm like, okay, explain it a different way. I didn't, I didn't get it. And so just thank you for the countless hours that you've helped me as an individual, but the entire district. Thank you.
I want to thank all of you again, and I just want to reassure you that I am very confident that my successor is going to be able to just step right in. He has experience. He's already been in the district a few days to work with me, and we laughed because I would start to just explain, you know, how I did something, and he would finish my sentences. So it was it was wonderful. So it's very relieving to know that that I'm exchanging everything over to someone that's that's very capable. So I want to welcome Mr. Cook. He'll be with you next month.
We are excited to have him, but it'll be different for that seat to be different. Another piece that I do want to bring to the table, just so that we can talk about it, is that one of the things we committed to as a board when we changed how we did the superintendent search process was that we also committed to the public that we would outline goals and that we would hold our superintendent, whoever that would be at the time, accountable, and that we would check in on those both regularly throughout the year and that we would evaluate at the end of the year. And I do want to thank the board for adjusting their times to come in, for being stewards of those goals and of where the district is headed, because we did set forth goals for Mr. Richards, and we have and are continuing to evaluate those. So I appreciate that we all have worked together to keep that promise that we made to the public and to work with Mr. Richards on those those goals that he is accountable for and thereby his his staff and team become accountable for. So thank you to each of y'all for your work over the last year. It's been a fun year, which is not something that I've had the opportunity to say thus far on the board, so thanks, Mr. Richards. It's been it's been a fun year. I don't know what that was. Any other, oh, the other piece that I have for board discussion is that it's Fair Week. So I'm not certain how many of our students engage in Fair Week, but I believe, I would have to believe a number of our students are engaged in Fair Week, so I'm wishing them all well this week with the heat and the projects.
One thing we do need to go back to on the superintendent's evaluation, that contractual piece.
Yes. So one of the pieces of Mr. Richards' contract is that if he, if the board finds that he meets his goals for the year, that he has met the criteria, whether that is they're in progress or they're fully made, he is eligible for a 1% bonus based on merit. And so while the board has found that he has met or is in progress of his goals, Mr. Richards, would you like to share your your preference as it relates to that?
Just at this time, I think with where we are with administrative pay already in the district, and while we are working to get the rest of our employees up to be a competitive level, I appreciate the board when the board brought me in. I think you guys did a lot of homework to try to make sure that my pay was was commensurate with the with the area and with the market, but I just don't feel comfortable taking that one. I appreciate the trust and support that the board has put in me, and I do value that, but I just don't feel comfortable taking that 1% bonus at this time while we're still working to get the rest of our employees pay wise where they need to be in order to be competitive. And I realize that's not a, as Mrs. Perry is talking about, you know, 35, $36 million budget, I realize that this doesn't represent a ton, but I think the spirit of it is that there has to be solidarity from my position, which is probably the highest paid position in the district, all the way down to the lowest paid position in the district. And there needs to be some solidarity that that I am aware and understand, not just my own situation, but all of the employees of our district that I represent, all 350 regular and 200 irregular, which I wanted to ask Mrs. Perry, do I count as a regular or irregular person? She can answer that after after next Tuesday. She can answer that question next Tuesday, off the record. So I appreciate the support of the board, and I appreciate the guidance that you provided for me, but it just at this time, I don't feel appropriate. I don't feel I don't feel positive about accepting that as as a condition of my employment yet, when we still have employees that need to be paid their equivalent of what they deserve as well.
I personally want to thank you for the year that you've put in for us. I do believe we're moving in the right direction. I have very few sayings, but this one, I really believe it. You've heard it before from me, we move forward, we move backwards, we don't stay where we are. So the challenge is continue to move forward. We want to move forward as a district, and I think you're up to the challenge. I hope you accept that challenge, and we look forward to a great second year.
I will tongue in cheek say I'm thrilled that you were beginning your second year here. We like that amount of consistency in our in our leadership. And as we discussed in looking at your goals, a lot of those are going to be ongoing. So where you have met them, where you have exceeded them or where they're in progress, we're not done yet. There's still more work to be done. I do think that you're know that, you know, we wanted to make sure, and Dr. Gase is always very dedicated with this, is making sure that to bring the best, we have to pay well. We get what we pay for. And so we were we were diligent in that with with hiring you and with your pay, but we also recognize that that we have a district that also needs to get there. And so I believe your your approach to this is is fair, and it shows insight, so I appreciate that.
Well, and I'm going to tie it in because I forgot something else during this as well to show, as we try to take care of things and continue to move forward, to make certain that our first two days for our staff, the 15th to the 16th, we're doing our opening convocation on the 16th, and that will also be then professional development for the rest of the day. And then the 15th will be our, the day before, will be our workday for staff. That's a little bit of a switch from what it is on our on our calendar. So because I had a very good person that just reminded me that I was supposed to bring that up earlier, and I forgot to do that, I'm going to tie that all into my evaluation and how we are always going to strive to do better, and we can grow and improve, and we're not going to be perfect first time around. It's a good thing that I have people that we're only as successful as the people that we work with, and we're very blessed here. I'm very blessed at Tiffin City Schools to have an incredible team that I get to work with as well, to help get us going in the right direction. And that includes the Board of Education, so thank you for all your support and wisdom as well.
So if my math is correct, at our next meeting, we will not have Mrs. Perry, we will have Mr. Cook, and school will already be in session.
That is correct.
Wild.
Yes. This is what happens at this time of year.
Everybody back there just like shuddered.
It's pretty much every August.
I know.
Pretty much every August. You're right.
It feels like it feels like it has snuck up on us. So pretty much.
Yeah, but it used to be August 16th. You're still on vacation.
Yeah.
Those days of starting after Labor Day are long, but you normally start last week, August, but those days are gone as well.
So with that, I do want to wish all of our teacher staff and those who keep this district running and going, I wish them well with their their prep for the school year and with their their opening to the school year.
I'd also like to point out, I'm impressed with the improvements I've seen around the district. The fences are going up on the courts. Mr. Daniels, I got a picture of the bathroom upgrades. And this isn't anything extravagant. It's just that I think we're showing that we have a little bit more pride in our stuff now, and, you know, I think our community has to understand that, yeah, we're proud of what we have here, but we need to be better. And then I'm reminding everyone, I believe, August 17th is the band bash day with the bands downtown, so come out, support them. You're probably going to see the football players selling their cards, banned soon. Athletes are getting underway, students are getting ready, and our vacation is ending, so we'll all be back soon and back at work. So good luck to all the staff and to the students.
Any other thoughts or pieces for board discussion? I do not believe that we have executive session, so then I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. This is Mrs. Perry's last roll call.
We don't have a second yet.
Still didn't miss it. Yeah.
Any discussion for Mrs. Perry's last roll call?
Any extra contract days for her?
Nothing.
I thought we were getting her an abacus to go.
I still have my fingers.
All right, one last one, Mrs. Perry.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth.
I'm so glad we had this time together. Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Well, there's already enough, so it doesn't matter if I say no, so yes.